If you're lucky, you better be shot.
I'm not looking for months. I'm not talking more than that. I need something.
Alrighty, it's 5:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call this man door. Alright, we'll begin with the pledge. Mr. Chapman, you will lead us.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, we don't have any delegations, so we will move into reports, and I'll start with Ms. Gueye.
Hello.
Hi. So this is one of my band students. This is Joe Carter. He's in the sixth grade. I invited more, but some of them fell ill, so they couldn't be here tonight. But recently, the concert band had immense success at Region Two Ratings Festival in Parkersburg this year. So how that works, we play two pieces from a pre-selected list, and we go to be judged on a scoring scale of one to five, with one being the best and five being the absolute worst. After all was said and done that day, we came away with two ones and one two. So our overall rating was one, and so we have been celebrating that success for the last couple of weeks. And it's really impressive. The band has been growing the whole year, right? And we've picked up Joe along the way, and he's been an immense contributor, and we're on the track to do great things. And we also have a concert coming up on May 18th at 6:00 PM. For anybody that would like to come, it's free of charge. And I think with all of the success that we've had this year, next year will be just as better.
Great. What instrument do you play, Joe?
Saxophone.
Oh, that's.
How many students do you have in the band?
Right now, I have about sixteen. And next year, it's looking like I might have more. We've started talks about color guard for marching season, and I have had several students interested, so it's on the rise.
Great.
Everything's going pretty well right now.
Great. We're proud of you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We've been working with Daniel Reed, Ms. Butcher, to try to reorganize the schedule so the middle schoolers could participate. Try to help in anything that you need from me or the district here. Let us know, because we want to develop the band.
Of course. Thank you.
Yes, and I will say, as somebody that was a band director, but also I adjudicate a lot of these. One thing that I want to bring your attention to is smaller bands and smaller school districts like Gilmer often get overlooked because of how tiny their district is and how small their band is. So when you go into these situations, it's not that you've got to play well. You've got to impress. I mean, you've got to do more than the bigger schools and the more reputable bands. And so this is a huge, huge deal for us. And thank you, Dr. Mini, because the availability of middle school band is what's going to absolutely allow things like this to continue. We've got a great elementary band. We've always had a good high school band. If we can get those middle years in there, we will, no telling how high we can go. So we're very proud of you, Randy.
Great. Thank you all for coming.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, we'll move on down the agenda and begin in the consent agenda with amendments.
I make a motion that we approve all three of the April 10th meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second to approve all of the April 10th meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion or amendments to the main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, we will move on to the treasurers report. Mr. Chester.
Good evening.
Hello. What I have for you this evening is a schedule of checks to be written. Are there any questions with those?
I think we're good.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the schedule of checks to be written.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second to approve the schedule of checks to be written. Is there any further discussion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move down to new business and start with letter A, approval of preschool start and end dates. Dr. Mini, anything?
We just have submitted, and you know, the approval for the dates, August 28th, 2023 through May 16th, and that's, that would be my recommendation to approve those dates.
I make a motion to approve the preschool start and end dates for Gilmer County Schools, August 28th, 2023, and ending on May 16th, 2024. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second. Is there any further discussion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, we'll move on to letter B, approval of zoology standards.
These are just, with the expansion of our school schedule and different curriculums that we're working on, we had the teachers come up with a list of ideas of things that they would like to teach, and this is one of those that we did not have curriculum for, content standards for. And I don't know if we'll get the students' interest, but we would need to prove standards before we could teach the class. So this would be something that Mr. Fisher would be focused on in the upcoming school year, and I believe there has been some student interest in zoology.
I think Kara signed up for it.
I think, you know, some of the words you're just reading in the curriculum and the standards here, you're hearing a lot about genetics, a lot of genetic talk in that, but yeah, I think that'd be great.
Because these are just, this is outside the state scope. This is something that we would have as a local offering from the Board of Education. We've worked with other districts, and Mrs. Mason put the standards together with Mr. Fisher, and those would be primarily what the corps should be working on.
I make a motion to approve the zoology standards as presented by Dr. Mini and the Board of Education, and ask that we approve those standards.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second to approve the zoology standards that were presented to the board with the superintendent's recommendation. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, we'll move down to C, Gilmer County Elementary School Storage Building bid.
We've had the bid opening, taken a little bit over our budget. We're working on some value engineering right now. We think we've got it close enough, but we're not ready to make a proposal at this time. It is going to be something that we would like to come back to the next meeting. When we've got a little bit more time, we were kind of behind opening that Friday, to be able to work with the company. So I just ask that we table that until the next meeting.
I make a motion that we postpone the Gilmer County Elementary Storage Building until we get the valued engineered bid.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second to postpone the Gilmer County Elementary School Storage Building until we get a valued engineered bid. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, we will move into old business and start with clarification of PL conversion days.
This is my mistake. I said 24th, 25th during the meeting, and it should have been the 25th, 26th. So I ask that you make a motion to rescind that 24th, 25th approval of the conversion days and accept my recommendation of the 25th, 26th of May to be the PL conversion days. I had just, I had just written the days down wrong.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the May 25th and 26th dates that were presented at the last meeting and to convert those to May 25th and 26th as the new professional learning days for Gilmer County Schools. Is there any further amendments or discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We then will move on to B with the school calendar.
This is, this was submitted to the state and not approved. It's basically just a one-day difference. We had originally wrote the PL day, which does count for instructional days, as the start date on our calendar. For some reason, that wasn't approved, even though it was approved in other districts that use the same calendar. So we had to call into the state and change that date until the 17th. That was the original day students were starting. We were just calling it the 16th. So I recommend making a motion to rescind the approval of the 2023-2024 Gilmer County School Calendar with a start date of August 16th and approve the calendar as stated by me as starting on August 17th, 2023 for students.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to follow the superintendent's recommendation on the school calendar, and that would be to rescind the approval of the calendar that was passed at the last board meeting with a start date of August 16th and to approve the new calendar with a start date of August the 17th. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, we will move into personnel.
Under professional resignation, communities and schools liaison effective 7/1/2023, Jared Fitzwater's resignation. Also, I'd like to make the recommendation of Max Bu- 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 Byrne as a substitute teacher Gilmer County Schools.
Make a motion that we accept the professional portion of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the professional section of the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty.
Extracurricular, those jobs came down today. We had quite a bit of interest in those. We did not get a chance to, we're going to have to hold interviews, and we did not get a chance to have that complete before tonight's meeting, so those will just have to be table till the next.
Do we need a motion to do that?
I'm not making any recommendations at the time.
I don't think so, yeah, we'll move on.
I just put them on there just in case I did have them, and I did, and I don't.
We're good to the next section, Dr. Man.
Probationary contracts for 2023-2024 professionals. I recommend the following: Julie Busby, Alicia Martin, Allison Moss, Leah McIntyre-Smith, Barbara Yoder, Janelle Chinowitz, Aven McHenry, Faith Norris, Hannah Wilson, Eric Yoder, Brittany Cassounis, Jesse Moore, Jacob Persine Singer, and Tanya Wine.
So moved. Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the probationary contracts for the 2023-2024 professional personnel. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Probationary contracts for the 2023-2024 service personnel. I make the following recommendations to the probationary contracts, which would be Jason Bailey, Patrick Buckner, Donna Fox, Joshua Godfrey, Christina Hacker.
So moved. Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the probationary contracts for the 2023-2024 service personnel listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Alright.
Next is the continuing contracts for the 2023-2024 professionals. I make the recommendation for these contracts, for the continuing contracts for these professional personnel, Morgan Allen, Ashley Barker, Katrina Frederick House, Sonia Hartzorn, Nathan Haynes, Kelsey Hickman, and Leslie Shiftler.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the continuing contracts, which is 2023-2024 professional staff listed on the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
The continuing contracts for the 2023-2024 service personnel, I make the following recommendations for these folks to have a continuing contract, is Harry Canfield and Stacy Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the continuing contracts of the 2023-2024 service personnel listed on the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to the main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, at this time, I would like to appoint Jason Barr as the presiding officer for the next two sections on the personnel agenda due to family ties with those two sections. I'll recuse myself at this time and let Dr. Barr proceed.
He does. Percussion.
Alright, we will now move on to reduction in force for the 2023-2024 school year. Superintendent?
I make the following recommendations for the reductions in force for the 2023-2024 school year. Randy Castile, Jennifer Harper, Heidi Lindsey, Randy Polling, and James Pausley.
I make a motion to approve the reduction in force for the 2023-24 school years presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? So moved to approve the reduction in force for the 2023-2024 school year as presented by the superintendent. We will now move on to, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Transfers for the 23-2024.
The transfer recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year are Jason Bailey, Rose Harper, Tammy Smith, and Terry Stonaker. Those folks will all be placed on the transfer list.
Make a motion to approve the employee transfers for the 23-24 school year as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Transfers for 23-2024 approved.
You can come back, Tony.
Alright, so that takes care of personnel. We will move on to continuous recruitment and start with Ms. Butcher for our high school.
Well, we've been busy. Tomorrow, our committee's going to meet, and we are going to select the seniors and juniors, who, and the seniors will be given preference for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Youth Program. And those students will have a $4,000 total package when they complete the entire program. So that selection is going to happen tomorrow. We attended the GSU Jazz Band Concert on Tuesday. We had a wonderful time. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for coming.
It was so good to get everybody out of school and into a nice, calm kind of environment. And it was also good to, for those students to be in such an environment that they had to practice some good listening skills and manners, absolutely. Today was the first day of the General Summit of Assessment, and things went very, very smoothly. We are looking for a very smooth days two, three, and four for the rest of the week. We are having an SAT makeup tomorrow for one student, and that is tomorrow. For juniors, the SAT results will be delivered to them on or about May 4th, and the school will not get anything until about the 31st of May. I have asked a group of teachers to meet, because we have so many things going on at the end of school, and we are organizing a last, we have organized a last day of school committee. We're going to meet again on the last day of school. We have senior assembly. We have to move out the entire east wing to get ready for new tile. We're going to have a grill and chill on that day. We have graduation practice. And I asked, C I S to come through with some attendance prizes, and we have some wonderful cool prizes for students in grades six through 12, and we even have something for 12 graders. And our lunch, we are going to have a luau theme, but we are not going to have a pig with an apple stuck in his mouth.
Too bad.
Rotating on the front of the, in front of the school.
You sure? We can make that happen.
I'm sure.
Glad you helped us out.
Now, because we've got so much stuff going on, we'll take one pass it. Because we have so much going on with the removal of tile in the entire east wing and the removal of tile only in the hallways of the west wing, I asked our art teacher to come up with some possible designs for tile replacement, because we don't want to just see a normal, ordinary white tile go down. And we wanted to have, have a little bit of creativity, and actually, there was some input there with, with student work as well. So we, he came up with an abundance of designs, and we pared them down to 10. So what I am going to be doing is, this week, I am going to be pushing those designs out to all students, all teachers, and all staff people, because I think students need to have a voice in their school. Students had a voice in the naming of the Wildcats and their colors at the elementary school. So what, so I'm hoping that there will be one overwhelming selection, and if there is not one overwhelming selection, then we will have, we'll narrow it down to the top three and let them go from there. Now, all of the, all of the tile will be replaced in the east wing, but that's not to say that tile won't be replaced in classrooms at some point down the future. So whatever is voted upon is the plan that we are going to have in place for that. And I thought that was an important part of improving our school community and climate and culture at the school. Kids want to have a voice, and so do teachers. I did change PT conference till tomorrow. Felt that if we waited another week, it was going to be too late for where it was already scheduled, so I moved it back. So it is strategically placed at the four-and-a-half-week mark. That way, that if a student needs to make some improvements, they will have the time to do so. But our teachers are already on that. Just so that you know, that our disciplinary referrals have been reduced significantly with the minor changes that we've asked teachers to make. This week, we took possession, on Friday actually, and Dr. Mini was up for it, but we took possession of 15 laptops with a charging card that was made available to us through the USDA grant that the Glenville State University had written back in 2020 for the pandemic. So you will be seeing some promotional stuff, and I think probably you'll get something from Glenville State with our pictures. And I had, you know, Dr. Manchin loves a crowd, so I had a nice crowd of juniors. And boy, he was very impressed, and I was very grateful that he was, you know, he's just so animated anyway. And so what this is going to be used for, originally, it was intended for, for dual, for college courses to be used virtually. And so what this is going to be used for, originally it was intended for, for dual, for college courses to be used virtually. But we're doing everything dual credit. There'll be very, very little, if anything, that's done virtually. So they are going to allow us to have access to computers to do whatever we want. So I'm just very grateful and we will find a need for them. I will let the new principal, whoever that is, make that decision. That's not my call. But I did take, I, I, they, they have been received and I am very grateful. The honors banquet is scheduled for May the 10th and invitations have been sent to students. And you had to have a three-five over three, over the three consecutive nine weeks. Mr. Sterns from the Career Center met with eighth graders and ninth graders. So that the eighth graders understand that at some point next year down the line, that they will be able to start the Career Center a little earlier than usual. But they will be looking at such things as grade point average, attendance, disciplinary referrals. Because you know, if you get them down, they're too young. Immaturity is not good in, in the high wall area. But the Career Center will come up this Thursday and we will do the first rounds, first round of face-to-face interviews for those students who have made application to go to the Career Center. As of today, all juniors will have a schedule for next year. We're going to commence work on the sophomores tomorrow. Eighth graders have their course selections completed and the freshmen, we are working toward the same goal there. We have established the final week, finals week schedule. We do have some students that we're going to have to work with on a, on an individual basis. I have one student who is a junior and is going to leave before the end of finals for basic training. Those kinds of things we're going to deal with individually. Senior Assembly is the 24th of May. Graduation is the 26th. And prom is this Saturday and we are winding things down. But it will be a busy four and a half weeks and that is all I have to report.
What day did you say graduation was?
Graduation is the 26th.
On a Friday.
On Friday. You need to talk with Abby to see who's going to give your nephew his diploma. You may have to wrestle Amy, I don't know.
Oh, that's, she can do it. I give him life experience every, or life advice every time I say it.
Bet you do.
Alright.
That's just, that's just a piece of paper.
But you know, that's something that I started years ago. And that if you had somebody, if you had somebody in your family that was graduating, why not let the teacher make the presentation? You know, that's more for a, a family. That's really important. And it's not necessarily necessary that we present the diploma. But, and, and be, and we can all gather in that picture. It doesn't matter. But you know, that is just a really special moment. I remember doing that for my daughters and it was a very special moment for me. And I want somebody else to have that moment. It's a, it's a wonderful moment. It's a wonderful moment. And I think it's just a little something extra that we can do and make their lives meaningful. So that's all that I have, but you have those, the sweets and we're going to be putting those out for vote. Once we know, I'll come back and I'll let you know what we got.
Yeah.
I just hope you vote to, to make sure that you replace the tile, not just take it up. But just make sure you vote to replace the tile. Clay, that's your turn.
No, we're just having fun.
We're just having fun. We're doing our very best HGTV.
That's right.
And she was talking about the dual credit classes. Kara's preliminary schedule for next year, five of her eight classes will be dual credit.
And we're fixed up to where it was.
You know, that's impressive.
And I'm thrilled, and I'm thrilled.
It is impressive.
She's gonna be one very busy girl.
Well, yeah, but she needs that.
She needs that and that's what I'm hoping.
That's right.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Litter.
Yes, thank you.
Well, Clay and I workshop is, is a little bit more dry than that. We're going to do our best to spice it up, right?
There's not a lot you can do with it. It is what it is.
We're excited, we're excited to give you the presentation. We think it's going to be good for you guys to see how we receive our funds, what our funds, what funds, how fund accounting works. How it all gets put into our funds in our, our district.
Come on Tyson now.
Just so you know, I will, I will watch this on YouTube. Hey, you got it, Tyson. But, and then, and then, you know, how they're allocated throughout the year. So we're going to try to brief overview of these different types of things. So again, we're kind of bored, you know, it's a, it's a corporation created and authority of the West Virginia Code 185-1. And it's composed of five members, of course, that you all. And that, with that corporation, we developed a budget. And how, this presentation is going to talk about the code, how they interact, the budgetary process, the revenue sources, the state aid, monitoring fiscal conditions in a summary. So you're going to have a, kind of a brief overview of all of those different types of things. And maybe an explanation. It might make some things more clear. You've got a set of handouts there. And in those handouts, it's a follow-on and then Clay's going to get down into the weeds a little bit. And, and when he does that, you will have individual updated preliminary comps and all the things for this year's budget coming up. And what our projections are and how we arrive at all of these different types of projections. Like how we arrived at the different transfer numbers and all of the different things that we use. A lot of it is based on student enrollment. So the County Board of Education and the county superintendent shall comply with the instructions of the State Board of School Finance and shall perform the duties required of them in accordance with the provisions of this article. That's 18 to 9D-17. Of course, superintendent shall act as the chief executive officer and under the direction of the State Board execute all of its educational policies. The treasurer, under 189-6, the treasurer is the fiscal officer. Or an employee commonly designated as the person in charge of the financial affairs of the county board. You know, it's, it's Clay's job to keep us on track. It's Clay's job to make sure that we have, we're not falling into some type of pitfall with our finances. And also to monitor in good faith what we do with our money. And then, you know, if we're getting something wrong, he's supposed to stand up and say, hey, we can't do that. How they interact, the Board of Education, we meet monthly, the superintendent, I have an administrative degree, management, so on. The treasurer has a business degree. They provide guidance and reports to the superintendents and other stakeholders. I make recommendations to you. You guys make the motion and vote as a group and that's how things get done. Which we've done very good so far. The budget process, every year, all boards in West Virginia are required by statute to prepare, to prepare an annual budget and levy rate estimates on the prescribed forms and submit these for approval. Of course, you guys are familiar with this because we just went through the whole landing of the levy last meeting. And then this next slide goes down pursuant, the school board is required to hold meetings or meetings between the 7th and 28th days of March to ascertain its financial condition and determine the amount is to be raised from levy taxes, which we did. And we, we laid the levy and did all of those types of requirements. The school board is also required to submit a proposed budget for the subsequent year to the State Board of Education. That's what we will be doing. Clay and I have been having many, many budget meetings. We've been meeting with the directors in our Colts meeting. We've been having these conversations about what we, our strategic priorities are, what we're going to do in the future. You know, some of the things that I would like to focus on. And we will eventually have a budget proposal for you guys to hopefully approve. And it's going to have the strategic priorities reflected of what, what, what we have talked about as a board. And, and that's what we put our funding into. So the school board is also required to hold a public hearing on this proposed budget before it's submitted approved. The proposed budget must be made available for public, to simulate at least 10 days before the public hearing is held. And you're going to see that come out in the next month. We're going to do that process. So we thought it'd be good to give you guys a PD, a, a, a budget PD on how the process works, how we get our funding, where the funding comes from, the documents that we use, and to give you a brief overview of these things. So that way, in the next month, when you see this stuff coming out, you'll be front-loaded. You'll understand where it's all coming from, what we're spending our money on. It's all going to be held for public inspection. Everybody's going to see, be transparent with the situation and so on and so forth. Okay, primary revenue sources. We got three different revenue sources. We've got local, which we just laid the levy. That's our local revenue source. Our state, that's our state aid. It happens to be usually by, adjusted by the amount of numbers of enrollment that we have. And then we have the federal sources. And that's a lot of like every student succeeds act or federal grants and things that we apply for and so on and so forth. And Clay, you chime in if I'm, if I'm saying anything wrong.
Doing a good job.
So.
Got this.
I think he comes in on slide 13, so. So, correct Clay? So our local revenue sources, our regular levy fund, you can see Fund 11, our excess levy fund, that's Fund 12. And we'll get down in the weeds with exactly these pots of money, but that Fund 12 is our local levy. That's the one we pass here that allows us to have and do so much more than what we could do without those funds. The, the regular levy is state aid fund, so.
No, no, the regular levy is just the tax rate that the state puts out.
Yeah. The state aid is, what's the number of fund that is?
Fund 11.
Fund 11.
Yeah, that's our fund.
Regular tax levies, legislature sets the regular tax levy. Statutory requirements and timeline and local share requirements. That's where we're at. Clay's going to take, take over and talk about the individual pieces of this and how they fit together. And if you follow along in your, in your packet there, you will see some of the documentation.
Thank you.
Space part of this for 12.
Enter.
Enter.
Enter. Your time has run.
That's not fair.
Me too.
Just as Dr. Many had said, as we're, as we're building a budget, one of our main concerns is the revenue stream that's going to support it. We have to, we have to know what that is because anything that we do, we have to be able to sustain. So that, that is very important to nail down what those, what those revenue streams are. The first one there that we're looking at is the regular tax levy. That is in your packet, that is, we just laid that on the 18th. That's $2,110,037. That, that is straight from what we voted on, or what you voted on as a board last week. And those rates are set by the state. That's why they call that a regular tax levy and it's based on property values. The excess levy is the, is the next source of local funding. Not all counties have an excess levy. I'm glad that Gilmer County, the citizens of Gilmer County have allowed us to have that. Because if it weren't for them, we wouldn't have it. And it does provide extra things within the county that we wouldn't have. Our students have access to bus transportation, to practices, to different events, different things like that. The excess levy pays for that. We have ex, we have extra instructional funding because of our levy, the excess levy, so that helps. One of the main sources, can you guys see that? One of the main sources of revenue for each and every county is what is known as the state aid funding formula. I'm going to step around for a minute. State aid is driven by enrollment. That has somewhat changed over the years. Used to be whatever your enrollment was is what you got funded at. But the state has recognized the overall general decline in enrollment throughout the state. I believe it was last year, the year before, they came up with the idea, initiative to fund counties that were declining enrollment, trying to get them at a static number to where they could maintain what they were doing. And that number was 1,400. We don't get a full 1,400 students, but we are adjusted by 364.59. Roughly, we have about 799 students at the time. So that bumps us up to about 1,152 students, which is a good thing. Sometimes they call those students ghost kids, fake kids. You may hear them called a lot of different things. But those are students that we don't actually have, that the state does give us. Our total state aid for 23-24 is projected to be $6,501,470. That is just our state aid. You add our excess levy. You added the regular levy on top of that. PEIA, we are given money for employee retirement, or not retirement, for insurance. The employer portion of that insurance, $786,208. All these numbers up here, as much as I would like to tell you as I go building a budget, these are still subject to change. We do not have final comps for these numbers yet. We do get retirement funding. That's $470,572 is what's projected for next fiscal year.
Does the state fully fund the health insurance and the retirement or do we have to fund?
For, for the, for the most part, for the most part. It, it's not exactly one-to-one, but it comes out pretty close. Unfunded liability. The auditor was here talking about the liability that shows up on our balance sheet. That is, that is a number that they give us. We treat it as revenue, but at the end of the year, we just write it off as expense. We just expend it out as, it's really not truly revenue, but they give it to us like that. Other sources of state revenue. If we're, if a county is fortunate enough to be awarded an SBA project, that's included in their state aid funding. Or not state aid funding, but state funding. For our animal processing classroom, we will be receiving approximately $712,000 towards that project. Other forces, a state grant of state revenue or state grants. Basically, most of our state grants are pretty small. State, special education is one of the bigger ones for a state grant. That's approximately $56,000 for next year. Our ALC, we do get a little bit of funding for our ALC for supplies and whatnot to operate that. That's about $14,000. As we move forward, you'll see the grants are based on projections. We will naturally have this exact information until our budget is due. So you'll see probably July, August, as the new school year starts, you'll see budget journal entries where we projected what they would be. It might be less, it might be more than what we actually put into the budget. And that's what you'll see and approve as part of the budget journal entries. Everybody with me so far?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Federal revenue sources, again, federal revenue sources is mainly grants. Those are broken up into, in Fund 61, again, we get state special education funding. We get federal special education funding. Your Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title V, that's all federal revenue that we get for instruction. Our child nutrition comes through the federal, we get a meal reimbursement for costs that supports our child nutrition program. E-rate, which is like utilities, we get, we get some money for E-rate. We also get some money for our career and technical education that's federal. We get small pots that are state, but most of that CTE money is federal. Fund 71, over the next year or two will be gone. Fund 71 is something that's relatively new. We never had Fund 71 before COVID. That is, that is what the state and what we utilize to show our, what is it, federal stimulus expenditures and revenues. uh, what is it, federal stimulus expenditures, expenditures and revenues. Uh, you'll see it and hear it referred to, Shelley will refer to it, I'll refer to it. S R one, which is completely done, uh, and liquidated. S R two, and then the A R P, the American Rescue Plan. Uh, funding is all in fund seventy-one. Any questions? If you have questions, don't hesitate to stop and ask. All right? And as we said before, enrollment is the engine that drives state aid funding, okay? They take, the state takes a look at our first month enrollment numbers, uh, which is in September. They also take a look at our second month, because in September, you have a lot of changes going on. You're catching up with those students that are coming in. You're catching up with those students that have transferred schools over the summer and they haven't necessarily done the paperwork or whatever that they're supposed to, to follow through with that. So they take a, they capture a picture between that first and second month. Also part of that and part of that funding formula where they get the employee counts, uh, and the overages with service or professional is called the certified list. Uh, that is a list that we just love, don't we? That is a list that Lisa and I work on. Uh, we have to account for every employee, every full-time employee that the board has. Uh, that's exclusive of board members, that's exclusive of coaches, but every full-time employee that the board has, we have to report, double check, you know, their degree, their number of years of service, their, what fund are they paid out? What code are they paid out? All that information gets reported every year, uh, to the state. And that, that helps them keep us on the right track as far as how many employees that we have, how many, how many we should have, how many we're funded for, uh, and, and other things like that. All right? You will have, you should have in your packet, there should be a state aid comparison, um, sheet that compares what we're projecting to have in FY twenty-four versus what we got for this year. Those number, those numbers, or that summary came from what the state sends to me into the county, uh, for their, they call preliminary comps, preliminary computations, uh, of what that our expected revenue stream is for the year. Typically, we get them in December. We just got an adjustment here again, the second preliminary computation, uh, within the last week or two. Uh, but in those computations, it breaks down what state aid that we receive. All of our state aid, if you don't take anything away from this, take this away. All of our state aid, with the exception of a few items, all goes into our fund eleven, with the exception of a couple of things. Faculty, or yeah, faculty senate funding comes out of fund sixty-one. Uh, that is set aside by the state, uh, as to what the county has to take from that state aid funding and give to the schools for teachers to provide, uh, supplies in their classroom. And there's pro, there's professional development and service development that is also, um, kind of set aside in fund sixty-one that is restricted. Uh, fund eleven for the board, for the county, is an unrestricted fund. If we have a shortage in another fund, we can use fund eleven to cover it. We can either move money into the fund where it needs to be, or we can move expenditures maybe from the fund that's over expended into fund eleven. Uh, fund eleven is unrestricted, which means that we have the prerogative to use it within reason however we want.
That's a good one to know the, the, the balance of it.
Yeah, yes. And it typically, um, stands to reason that it has the largest.
Is that where we had our surplus this year, within fund eleven?
When you talk about surplus, that's within fund eleven, because everything in your financial statements, basically everything else is restricted.
Right. Strings attached.
Yeah. Um, if you notice in that handout when you go start going through that funding formula, step one is our allocation for professional educators, which is your teachers. That's their salaries, uh, benefits, different things like that, all right? Step two is your service personnel. Step three is, is your fixed costs, okay? Uh, step four, this is an important one because here, uh, very soon, when we start talking about next year, Joe's going to be presenting to you the purchase of a bus, okay? You know what that funding is, we know what that funding is for that new school bus. Step five is allowance for professional student support personnel, all right? Step six A, allowance for professional personnel substitute costs, okay? Substitutes other than our payroll substitutes is probably one of our biggest costs within the county. Uh, and that's, that's not unique to Gilmore. It's not anything that we're doing wrong this, an issue that every county faces. Six B, all right? You have professional substitutes, you have service substitutes. Uh, six D, that's what I was just telling you, the faculty senate funding. I believe if you look on that sheet, uh, we are funded for thirty thousand dollars, uh, for faculty senate. And that is based on head count of the teachers that we have. All right? You will hear Ms. Mason talk a lot about step seven A. Step seven A is allowance for improvement of instructional programs. Step seven A, that funding used to be restricted. It can only be used on certain things. Uh, that non-teen now is unrestricted. So Shelley, within the parameters of that, and, and you know, and as a board office and as a board, we can allocate that funding within reason for that instructional process. Upfront and honest, most of that funding, every year, every couple of years, she'll spend the bulk of it and she'll tuck away a part of it. Uh, because I believe most of you were here when we approved the last curriculum textbook purchase. You get into hundreds of thousands of dollars when you start buying textbooks for a whole county. That is the funding source for those textbooks, for the most part. Uh, our levy does kick in, some of that, our excess levy does kick in funding for that. Step seven B, instructional, okay? Buying those computers, we don't get lucky and get free computers all the time. Most of the time, we have to buy them, you know, security systems, our servers, the updates, all of that comes from that step seven B, um, funding pot. Step seven C, uh, allowance for advanced placement, dual credit programs. Step seven D is, is relatively, I won't say new, new, but they've started putting a lot more funding in that. That is basically support for new teachers, okay? Teachers that don't have any experience, they get a partner teacher to help them through those first few years of teaching, all right? They call it step eight, but it's basically like a summation. All right, here's all of your funding up to this point, okay? Step nine gets into local share, okay? Well, local share is based upon our tax collec, to let, tax collections for the county. And then step ten is a total basic state aid allowance for the county boards. That was that six million, five oh one, uh, what was it, three seventy-seven or something like that. Too many compieces in my head.
So, all of that money goes from the state, based off of F T E enrollment, our, our different revenue sources. So I would like to have the shot at explaining fund accounting. Um, and I'm, and Clay hopefully will have my back and, and maybe he doesn't too. But fund accounting is a system of the county used by nonprofits. Entities subtract the amount of cash assigned to different proposed, proposes and the usage of that cash. So Clay just went down through the list of all the different usages of that cash, um, that we have coming in. And I think what we've got to try to figure out is what does that actually look like? Um, we made this little graphic so you will be able to see. When you read those schedule checks, you'll see that code, okay? And that code is based on something. Um, you can see that fund eleven, you can see that state aid funding, step one through ten, P E I A, retirement, unfunded liability and general levy. That all goes down into fund eleven, professional educator, general expenses. So this, and I tried to make this look like a bank, because it's like that is an individual bank account. That fund is an individual bank account. Um, and fund accounting, when we pay out of that, that individual fund goes down. Then the local excess levy, that's fund twelve. So when we would happen to say spend money on textbooks, because we went, we, we decided as a group that we wanted a textbook that cost fifty thousand dollars more, because this is going to do a great job at teaching math. Um, we would dip into those local excess levies. They are restricted, but of course that's written into the levy call, so we can have those extra things like that. And it would come out of that fund, like that individual bank account. Then you got fund fifty-one, which is SBA funds approved projects. And you would notice that that fund, um, you know, with the completion of say, um, the animal processing classroom, that fund would be diminished to pretty much zero. We wouldn't have anything left in that unless we get another SBA funded approved project. Then you got fund sixty-one, that is your state grants, your federal grants, your child nutrition. And of course, that fund, if you would look at, at, at the monthly printout, you'll see that that fund gets awarded a certain amount based off our budget, then it goes down when we make payments. And then finally, the fund seventy-one, um, and these are all the major usages of, of the funds. So when you talk about, um, bank accounts or knowing what kind of cash we have on hand, you would have to look at each different one of those funds to be able to understand what we have and what, what's in them left. It's almost like there's five different bank accounts instead of one different bank account.
So the, the COVID, that fund seventy-one, it, it's going to be no more, or is that something? Okay, yeah.
Eventually.
That's what bought our, is that what bought our, our bu, our food bus or whatever it is?
No, that's different.
That was, um, that was a different grant.
That was fund sixty-one?
Was it state or federal?
Just what fund was it out of?
That was actually a grant written, um, Save the Children.
Yeah, I think it's sixty.
So it'd be sixty-one, huh?
Yeah, I think so. I'll have to go back and check.
Okay.
Yeah, so that fund seventy-one is restricted, uh, and you can, you know, that's, and we put COVID funding up there, because that's what it is. It's all that stimulus that the government gave.
Have we spent all that?
No.
We will.
Is it a spend or lose, or is it, do we have time to?
When it's done, it's done. We'll have, what we don't spend, we'll have to give back.
So we, we'll have to give back if we don't spend it.
Oh, no, we'll spend that.
That's why.
And the majority of it is.
That's why I thought it was that bus. I thought it was that something about.
That was different, but they used it, they wanted to use it for that stuff.
The H V C project took.
To renew the high school H V C.
And then there was, uh.
Didn't we use some of it on the meat lab?
There's four hundred thousand dollars of it that's set aside for that CTE expansion, that's part of that.
The meat processing and all that.
Yeah, it's part of that, uh, A R P funding packet.
And there's, there's different years of it. So you set S R one, and S R two, and S R three, and it rolls out in different years to come. So we've still got a few more years.
Yeah.
Please continue.
That's, that's how, that's how the fund accounting, that I can best show it on a graphical slide. It is individual funds that we have, our revenue sources are multiple different streams. And after fund seventy-one, you want to see, most of the stuff comes from these four funds. Um, and when we talk about, when we talked about this as a board before, what we want to see like with finances, you guys want to see something that you can understand and see and know, those types of things. And we'll be continuing to talk about that. Expenditures, eighty percent of, of the expenditures, and, and, and I've been to lots of places where they say eighty-five percent, but we did, we did a conservative, eighty percent of the expenditures are personnel. So all of those state aid formulas and everything, the majority of the funding that we have goes out of the personnel. Uh, I make recommendations, uh, for that personnel, just like we did tonight. To stay inside of that F T E formula, that's the magic formula from the state, we have to hit those numbers. And that's like when we voted on the groups and transfers, that's what we did tonight. So there's annual expense, fixed, variable, operations, all of that are different expenses that we have. Uh, I'll make, uh, recommendation on expenses. Then we have annual expenses, we have fixed, uh, we have variable expenses, operations, utilities, textbooks, supplies, equipment, maintenance, capital improvement, transportation, all these things we spend money on. That money is coded, and you will see when we spend that money, it comes out on those schedule checks to be written, right?
Yeah.
That, did you give them that little handout that?
Yeah, there should, there should be, it should be like listed as a chart of accounts.
Yeah.
Behind that slide. And it, what it's doing, what those, what that handout is doing is explaining to you what that account string is. Just like you would see it on the schedule of, uh, checks to be written. You have your fund, if it has a project, it has a project number. It has a, either a revenue or, um, a program function code assigned to it. And that will break all those down. That, that chart of accounts section, I just wanted to give you basically a summary, but that is a huge, huge, um, section there that, I mean, I could have blown up our copier and printed it out, but.
It's big, it's really long.
Yes.
It's really, really long. But to give you an overview, if, if you looked at the chart of accounts, if we can send you the whole, I think you did, maybe email it. We can email, we can email you all the chart of accounts.
Yeah, you emailed ninety-something pages.
Yeah, it's long.
Yeah, it's long.
It, it's, it's really long.
Right.
But for the most part, that chart of account will, will tell you exactly, you know, the fund that's coming out of is one. So you're going to see fund eleven, you know? And then if there's a project code, if there's a revenue source, if there's an object, a location, you're going to be able to tell what fund that's coming out of based off of that chart of accounts.
Gotcha.
And what, kind of to relate that back to budgeting, uh, you can kind of, to picture it in your mind. When we start to budget, when the county starts to budget, when the board looks at a budget, the very first thing that we have to cover is our employees. The next thing that we have to cover is any outstanding debt or whatever that we have that has to be covered. Your utilities have to be covered. Uh, variable expenses have to be covered. Operations, okay, utilities, equipment, maintenance, all right? So you kind of go through and you project, you kind of, well, you kind of watch that pot of money go down and down and down. And whatever is left is what you have on hand to do with.
Just like at home.
What you want. What you want, what you, and it, and it is, I mean, it's some, it, it's, it's a constant juggle. I mean, just if even with your personal budget, it's a, it's a constant juggle. For you, it's a constant juggle, um, hopefully not constant, but it can be a juggle at some times, um, for, for a board.
So a fiscal year end, the surplus deficit affects a budget of the next fiscal year. Of course, we have surplus, we're very lucky to have that and get, continue on and, and be able to have that. Um, annual financial statements, you'll see those are the different codes, eighteen-nine B, nine, eighteen-nine-three A. They're due ninety days after June thirtieth, year end. So I'm going to let Clay do this slide because it's a little bit about our carryover funds and, you know, our strategic planning moving forward and so on and so forth. I'll jump in with it.
As most of you are aware, um, for fiscal year twenty-two, Gilmore County Schools has an unrestricted carryover of one million, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that is money that we are able to do and attack different projects. Some of those that we'll see, I mean, we're talking about tile and we're talking about.
Bleachers.
Bleachers, we're talking about, um, additional funding for the storage building. Uh, those are the things that when we have a surplus, that we get to do the extra. Uh, and that, that has cushioned, uh, our FY twenty-three budget. Those are, those are funding, that's funding that we are carrying forward with us, uh, to help meet our needs and even, you know, maybe succeed or exceed our expectations. Um, one of the things that we did for FY twenty-three, we had, we had some minimal findings in FY twenty-two, but as James was here and spoke to us about those, we're all taking care of. Um, strategic planning, uh, a- as we strategically plan, we have to, we, we can't just write down words without showing where the money's coming from, because that, that doesn't work, that's not how, that's not how this works.
Then we would be like the state legislature.
Yeah. No comment. But that's, you know, your, your, your actions, what you say you're going to do, has to be matched with, uh, the budget necessary, the means to do it. Um, budget for next year, okay, as, as we're going into FY twenty-four, okay? When we get down to that pot of money that we get to do with it, what we want to do with it, that's where we have to start communicating and with each other and, and, and asking, hey, you know, what's out there?
New list of what needs done.
Yeah, what do you see, what, what do we need, alright? Is this a need, is this a want? Uh, is this something, is this something, yes, this is a need, but there's no way that we can address it with what we have available. So we need to start putting away for it now. Um, and I, obviously, with all of that being said, students come first. Our, our, our resources and, um, our jobs, we would not be here if it wasn't for the students. Uh, and, and we have to keep that, we have to keep that first and foremost. This was a little quote that I found, I don't know that it could have, it could have said anything anymore, perfect from my perspective. Uh, it says, "Great leaders don't set out to be leaders, they set out to make a difference. It's never about the role, always about the goal." Um, and I, I think, you know, as, as a administrator, as a leader of finance, uh, that is certainly my goal to make those, make those things happen. It's, it's very hard to have an opportunity to do something and you weren't prepared with the money and lose the opportunity. Thank you.
Any questions?
I was just, um, curious about the dual credit classes and how we worked that with the college because I don't remember getting an invoice or anything from the college for Kara's dual credit this year. And I just wondered how.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay, well.
Any invoice or anything, not yet.
I just wondered.
Yeah.
How that would work for next year because we're obviously offering lots more dual credit, and I wondered if.
There's lots of different options that we have and we're going to continue to explore. And we're hoping to have the full rollout of the dual credit AA pathway within the next month and a big rollout. We would like, our goal is to, to make this a minimal cost for anybody. Um, and I think that we're going to come pretty close to doing that. Um, so I'm really, I'm really hoping that, um, we get a lot of kids signed up and I hope we get a lot of in, this year's tenth grader signed up because they will actually be able to complete as a, as a, as a AA or a dual credit.
Well, it seems to be a lot of excitement with at least Kara and her friends about the new offerings and the dual credits.
Absolutely. I think it's going to be very, very beneficial to our students. It's also, it's a symbiotic relationship with Glenville State.
Right.
Because a lot of these kids, and they're going to go to Glenville State. When they're exposed to that campus, we can send over as many as we can send from our, and we should, because they're.
Well, we need to take advantage.
They're our neighbors, that's right, they're our neighbors, so we should. So, and we can't grow a, a, a robust enough program, in my opinion, with them. We've got, uh, a lot of good things going there. And I, I've got a report out on that too. Is there any more questions about the finance stuff?
No. If you think of anything, just let me know.
And I think there might even have been a fund established in this legislative session or something that the chancellor AGPC was pushing out on that dual enrollment, dual credit, you know, stuff that may be taking and paying for that.
Well, I, you know, like I said, Kara just brought her schedule home, and I was just curious because I did, I wondered about the kids that would need financial help if there was some financial burden and, and how we were going to address that. Because I, you know, I would like that to be offered to all kids, not contingent on, you know, the ability to pay. So I just wondered about that part.
Well, we are, we're working diligently, uh, we're not quite ready to roll out that plan yet, but Daniel Reed and I have worked, um, in depth about, um, getting those students a go and the funding and things like that for that. Um, there are several different opportunities, and I'll go down through some of those opportunities that Glenville State offers for students that can be totally paid for, one hundred percent.
Well, and of course, when you go to college, you fill out that FAFSA, and if you qualify, you, you know, get aid. And I wondered if, was that the plan, or, you know, I just wondered what the plan was financially?
There is, and, and I don't want to unveil a program here before it's.
That's fine, you can wait, I was just curious.
We are, we've been, we've been in, been in the talks about, uh, we've tried to secure funding for those, those programs.
Okay. This time we move on to superintendent's update.
I've got several little things. First, I just wanted to go over the county administrator, county Gilmer Career Center Administrative Council. Uh, meeting was called to order, uh, the minutes were approved. Um, there was a report on simulated workplace. And, um, there was also, uh, a report from the, um, esports groups. There were two different highlighted esports groups there. They have an esports team and students can letter in esports. And they are in the process of getting scholarships and have some scholarship recipients of their esports programs there. They also, um, gave, uh, an introductions to their TSA program and their Skills USA program. And Mrs. McCormick along with her students gave a brief description of their competition. Uh, Mr. Sterns gave an overview of the summer, uh, opportunities. Those go down to sixth grade, they have things from bicycle repair to, um, hunter safety courses, uh, about getting our kids down there and participating in their summer programming. New business, they, they, they just, uh, they talked about their bills, everything was good, they approved all the matters presented. Um, and then they, uh, uh, talked about presenting, uh, the individuals, uh, for the summer programming, which the kid, the carpentry teacher will be Paul Parsons, automotive bicycle will be James Snyder, robotics will be Tim Wine, uh, summer camp coordinator will be Chris Ferris, and Mike, Mike Jackson will be doing the wild and wonderful West Virginia camp with the hunter safety course. Um, we went to the linkage meeting, it was very informative and it was student-led, I really appreciated that, that was very nice. The student-led, the students got up and presented in front of the group. And they had an excellent meal, I thought, um, for, for everyone to eat. And, um, they had just given an update on that, uh, linkage meeting at this meeting. Um, some of the other things that we've been working here on, uh, last week, State Deputy Superintendent Schools, Dr. Stankis traveled to Gilmer County to work with us on partnering about the Grow Your Own program. This would also be a partnership with Glenville State College. I went and participated in the, um, Grow Your Own, um, event at the college, uh, last week as well. We're very excited about it, we have it built into our new schedule. Our new schedule is being scheduled, our students will have a schedule when they, all students will have a schedule when they leave for the year. Uh, there won't be anybody not knowing who their, what their schedule is during the summer, and they're going to be enrolled in the courses at Glenville State. Um, we're going to bring Dr. Manchin over to have him inspire the students that are rolling into these courses. Um, some of those courses will revolve around this Grow Your Own program. And, um, we are hoping to get a, a, a good amount, I, I don't want to put a number on it, but we're hoping to get a good amount of students to participate in the Grow Your Own, uh, program at Glenville State College. It's a dual credit, uh, coursework that they will receive, education two oh three, two thirteen, two oh five courses. They will basically be able to go an additional eighteen hours of dual enrollment, uh, for a total of thirty hours. And they are going to have some major perks with the program. For example, here's one of the perks, and I think this should really perk everybody's ear up. Tuition costs for students enrolled in the Grow Your Own program in West Virginia are covered by the West Virginia Department of Education. That's right on Glenville State's pamphlet. We can get those students to go to school, get a four-year teaching degree and be paid for it. So I, I don't know if you guys have ever paid student loans, but I have paid student loans, and I think that's, would be an excellent opportunity for our students to.
And it also keeps them here.
Keeps them here. And we will be able to, um, fill those. Some of the other things would be, they would participate in study.com, they'd be able to prepare for their pack, practice core exams. They would be working with participating students receiving practice core waivers. Um, so we are very excited to partner with all of those different folks and offer the Grow Your Own program. We'll be having another ceremony and rollout of that program. And any high school tenth grader that would like to start that program, they will be able to start that program, start taking education courses at Gilmer County High School and be able to go to school, um.
That's a great deal, I mean, that's a great deal for the kids. And that's what we're going to have to do in order to, you know, fill our personnel and our teachers is grow our own.
So I wanted to report on that, um, a couple things, our project connect, we got several applicants and we're going to have to do some interviews. So we had a lot of good quality applicants for that, and we're going to be interviewing with those. I wanted to thank and give, uh, kudos to Mr. Chesser for helping me put together the budget training. We've worked with multiple districts and we try to give you guys all of the transparent information as we can. And I know it's kind of dry, but it is what it is. And, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask us. Um, I also wanted to give kudos to Mrs. Mason for the strategic planning session. I thought that went well, it was good conversation. And, uh, I thought everybody, it was very well received. And I want to give kudos to Mr. Sterns, his linkage meeting was kind of inspirational. I liked the way that he used his students' engagement. It was nice to see the students up there presenting. Um, you know, you could see things that would, that's a skill in itself to get up in front of people. And I, I really appreciated that Brian did that, so. The old update, we've kind of settled on, we think the total could be two times a month, um, for people to meet. We've run the numbers, it's still going to be expensive, but we're thinking that's going to be it, uh, that we can afford. I did look at mine, I don't think I'll need that, I don't think Cody will need that. I think it's going to be greatly shrunken down on a lot of that because I looked at it in particular today, but, um.
That's the policy.
Yeah, that's the policy committee. So we're going to be able to pay some of those folks for working those extra hours. We will be continuing to budget, and we are going to be submitting a budget in front of you. And you'll see all of the, the explanation of what we just showed you, uh, outlined. And, um, being as transparent as possible with any type of update, um, as far as that, that we can see. Also wanted to give one final kudo to Mr. Fraser, Mr. Chesser, Mr. Price. We've worked diligently on this storage building, guys, and we're just trying to get it to come in budget and work with multiple stakeholders, and I think we're very, very close to presenting to you something that we can actually build. And I commend everybody for their work on that. Um, that's all I've got, if you need anything from me, just let me know.
Alright, we'll move on to board member comments, and I have just a few. Um, I attended the jazz band concert, Dr. Varr hosted the high school students, I, you know, it was, they were very well behaved, I thought, you know? And they seemed to enjoy the concert. And, you know, it was very, uh, you know, fun for them to attend. And I think, you know, if we can continue that, you know, next year and years after, that only, you know, get them opportunities into something that they may not necessarily normally, you know, have a desire to get into.
Sure, thank you.
So I wanted, you know, to mention that. Um, I also attended the linkage meeting, um, with, uh, Dr. Many. And like you said, you had to have, to see the students get up and talk about the programs that they were in, you know? I think that was really important and it, you know, kind of showed, you know, people who don't always, you know, get to get down there and listen to the administrative council meetings, you know, what's truly going on. I think expanding that down to the middle school is really going to help out. And the more kids that we can send in that direction next year would be beneficial, um, for that center. Um, and also just kind of wanted to give kudos, um, the newspaper article last week was from Mr. Corcoran coming, um, was, was, was better and, um, you know, showed, you know, what Gilmer County Schools is doing. And I appreciated that and wanted to thank him, and that's all I have.
I just had that the, um, Gilmer County FFA will be opening their greenhouse on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, from four to seven. They are inviting everyone out in the community, they're going to have hot dogs and refreshments. And if you buy twenty dollars or more, uh, that night, you will be entered into a drawing to win one of two fifty-dollar greenhouse gift cards. So everybody come out and buy your momma some flowers for Mother's Day.
Anybody else?
Uh, Clay, I just want to thank, thank you and Dr. Many for, for that today. Uh, that answered so many questions for me to see how those budgets are laid out and those different funds and to see where that, where that money's coming from and, and what it can actually be used for. That's, that, that did everything that I could ever ask for, I really appreciate that. Uh, and then Superintendent, uh, Mr. Many, I just wanted to, to check in and see if we, if we'd ever thought about, uh, talking about the priority of future projects, um, that we had talked about, how there used to be a list and how I'd like to sit down with the rest of the board and, and look at that list and see where we're at and, you know, throw some ideas around and keep that going. Because it sounds like when we're looking at that excess levy, or not the excess levy, excuse me, our, our, our carryover, that that's, you know, some of those projects have been on that. So, uh, if, if that's the list of where we need to put, you know, stuff, and we need to keep that going.
I can proudly say there used to be a list.
Yeah.
We've manifested every one of them.
Yeah, that's good, so, I mean, that's.
We have, we have.
That's how you get things done, is by making lists and.
We're going to schedule, uh, a work session.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
And that kind of meetings.
And anybody out there watching, which I'm sure, you know, there might not be anybody watching at this, at this time of the meeting, but, you know, ideas, that's why we're here. Yeah, ideas, that's, that's why we're here, you know, so, you know, hit, hit up one of our board members and, uh, throw your ideas and we'll take that to the meeting, i- is, you know, what, what do you want to say?
And we're very lucky to be able to do that, guys.
Yes.
I mean, I have been in several districts, we have the, if we plan, and it might take us a year or two, but we can strategically get things done.
Well, it took what, eight or nine for the meat processing facility?
They were, yeah, that project was presented ever since I started working there.
So it's not like it all happened overnight, it's been a long, a long drawn out process.
Got to plant the seed.
Yeah.
Very fortunate we're able to even do that.
Yes, yes.
That's all I have.
Any further comments?
Um, I'd like to thank the high school for being such a great audience and the administration and, uh, the teachers for bringing them out, uh, to the jazz band concert on Tuesday, that was a great time, they were a great audience. And we really appreciated, uh, having them out there, and we will continue to do, uh, that in the future. What we'd like to try to do is bring the elementary kids out for the Christmas concert, they really like the Christmas songs. And then bring the older kids out for the spring concert. Um, one kind of minor thing I did want to bring up, just because a couple people brought it to my attention and, uh, I, I said I would address it. It's my understanding that Gilmer County Schools owns the, um, football stadium in Brooklyn, is that right? Okay, um, some of the, uh, residents around there have been complaining about, uh, the garbage that's been left there because of like the Titan Angels and a couple other teams are using that field. There's no trash receptacles out there, and I don't think there's any usable restrooms. Um, so I, I don't know if it might be possible to get some trash cans out there, but that, that had been brought to my attention, there'd been like some Gatorade bottles and things like that left out there. And, uh, I went out there and took a look and I, I don't, I didn't see any trash cans or anything out there, which I thought could be an easy fix, alright? That's all I have.
Anyone else? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so we've probably moved to second, that's adjourned, ring for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, sir.
No problem.